Okay. Welcome to Selectmen's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for May 14th, 2019. First item is to salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all. Okay. The person that I was going to embarrass tonight is not here, but we do want to mention that last Wednesday night at the York County Firefighters' Meeting, their regular, their yearly awards ceremony, the Firefighter of the Year Award for Dedicated Service went to Acton Fire's Robin Hamm. So I wanted to thank him tonight, but he is not here, which I told him I was going to mention him, and I get tonight, and I guess that's why he didn't show up. But that's okay, we'll get him again. So anyway, but anyway, yeah, he did get that award, and he's made, I don't know, well over sixty, seventy percent of the calls that Acton has. So anyway, so I just wanted to acknowledge that Robin Hamm received that award. Okay. On we go. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved to second, any discussion? Vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved to second to approve the minutes of the last meeting, any discussion? No call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Department Heads Committee Chair Updates. Let's go with the Forest Conservation Committee.
How are you guys?
Steve?
Good. Just wanted to get a little bit of a forum today for the Forestry and Conservation Committee. A couple of months back, I had submitted to the committee the forestry plan that I wrote over the course of the last winter. It was accepted by the committee, brought forth to the town, and I guess the questions that I was having now was to say that as we're looking at this management plan that has, you know, different assets for the property, recommendations to do, what do we do as a committee and as a town if we're going to try to enact this plan and do something out there in the woods? You know, I've got all the information for the lot, and we can go through, you know, obviously not here, but stand by stand, recommendation by recommendation, but the real question is, I guess, is what is the procedure now for this, this, this plan? If we're going to enact it, how do we go about doing such a thing? In the past, when we had done work on the Hebo-Hibo Road Lot, it had been brought to the Selectmen, Selectmen recommended and approved the procedure for me to move forward and do some of the work, but obviously, you know, we can change our procedure, I guess. You know, the idea behind having, you know, multiples of hundreds of acres with different recommendations on different acres can be pretty cumbersome if we have everything lined up for everyone in town to give, you know, their advice on what to do and that, but certainly anything like, you know, inviting public opinion at these meetings, whether it be a Conservation Committee meeting, or a Selectmen's meeting, or just with, in the town forest or as an educator at the same time along the way is certainly welcome, but we do need to have a bit of a, I guess, a truncated way through this in order to have some enacting of this if we choose to do so. So I guess I just wanted to give a heads up that the plan is in, recommendations have been made, what do we do next?
Who's the liaison?
I am.
You are.
Yeah. We have a meeting tonight, right?
I'm sorry?
You have a meeting tonight, right?
It's actually next week, next Wednesday, I mean, excuse me, next Tuesday, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, all right.
So, yeah, that's a good question, I don't know what's next, I've never...
Yeah, I guess, we'll talk about it when we have the meeting, and I guess, see which way we go.
Like I said, it's really, the Conservation Committee has certainly said, okay, well here's the plan, you know, now the town has it, so, again, you guys will talk about it, you mean, or, or the committee will talk about it?
I'll come to your meeting.
Yep.
And kind of go through everything, and then, I don't, I mean, I've never had to do this before.
On behalf of the Selectmen.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'll be at your meeting, and then, kind of listen to what you, you know, what you have to say, and what you've done and stuff, and bring it back to them, and then I guess we go from there, we make a decision.
Yep, that sounds fine. Again, just don't know how to, how to move forward, so, we've got a lot to talk about on that.
Okay.
Other than that, the committee has lost its secretary, we're going to have to replace that person, I guess I'll be in touch with Janice to figure out how to go about having that happen on the floor, I guess, at the June meeting, to elect someone new?
So we're still looking for a resignation from her, so until we have a written resignation in place, which I've told you and I've told her.
Right, okay.
She has to resign before the position can be filled, and depending on when her term expires, it depends on how we deal with it.
Okay, I mean, that's more of a procedural question, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, but we haven't, I mean, we haven't gotten anything, so, as far as the town is concerned, she's still a sitting member.
Okay. Anything else from me, I guess, that's just where we are at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any other Department Heads Committee Chairs? Nope, okay, we're going to move on, old business. We have 911 Addressing Operator.
We're going to deal with through an executive session next week.
Okay. Road Commissioner, Road Committee Ordinance.
Sorry, I'm canceling the Forest Conservation Meeting that my office has down for tonight, so I'm trying to get that scheduled.
I figured it was just me, because, you know...
No, that's who we have.
Okay, all right, so it's next, all right.
Okay. All right, so these are the notes that I got from Elise in regards to the changes. So a few things as we start to go through them. I have in front of me the Town Meeting and Election Manual, referencing a couple of things tonight. So in regards to the public hearing, so, "Public hearing preceding a secret ballot vote on an ordinance." So as discussed above, there must be a public hearing a minimum of ten days prior to the consideration of an article by secret ballot. If after the required public hearing substantial changes are made to a proposed ordinance, a further hearing must be held on the new version of the ordinance, and that's primarily because it's a secret ballot and you can't make changes on town floor. So I want you to keep that in mind because you have no time left for another public hearing. Absentee ballots have to be available on Saturday, and unless you vote tonight to poll these questions, these drafts are going to be on there.
Okay.
We can make some minor changes, so I was hoping we could just go through them together.
Sure.
All right, so, we've got the Road Committee one first. Section 1 formed of seven people, is the board okay with that, the Road Commissioner?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, and then, so that one is just changing the word of, with to of. First meeting shall be thirty days after town meeting, that's also just grammatical, grammar, you're okay with me making that change?
Yes.
No substantial change. The other one that we've heard from a couple of people is that the, the term with the two people that, that the board is allowing to have the remainder of their term fulfilled, this just isn't clear, so I think it was Mr. Pointe who clarified how this might be a little clearer by the text. The other three members will be elected at the annual town meeting after the two members with the unexpired term, so I'm just going to swap those sentences. Are you good with that?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. 2G is just correcting the spelling of "performed," thank you Paul. All right, add 2H, so these are the ones, any addition, you need to think about whether or not this is a substantial change, and you think it needs another public hearing. So the note was add 2H, "The Road Committee shall perform duties as requested by Town Meeting."
I mean, how, how is Town Meeting going to tell the Road Committee what to do? It has to go through a word article, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, the Town Meeting tells everybody what to do based on the articles and how it's written, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't at the public hearing, I don't know what it means.
So if we...
I think you have a good point.
It should already, already be happening through the articles.
Right.
Right.
I mean, Town Meeting, somebody can't, somebody can make an amendment at a Town Meeting on one of the articles, but they can't stand up and add a brand-new article and give the Road Committee some sort of instruction, so...
So if after this first year, the town decides they'd like to add a duty, it has to happen at annual Town Meeting anyways?
Right, right, you can't, right, and that's how you guys have the ending, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going to know about that way ahead of time, and that would go through the process.
So we don't need that.
We're not adding that.
No.
Section 3A, without approval of Town Meeting. "The Committee has no purchasing authority without approval of the majority of the Board of Selectmen." Adding the words "without approval of Town Meeting" is fine, because I'm guessing this is Mr. Gore, he's right, I mean, that's, nobody has any purchasing authority without that, I'm guessing he's talking about the article being approved, that, you know, that the money can be appropriated?
Right.
That was the reference, so, I mean, that's not really a, you know, a big change, it's up to you.
Yep.
Do you want to add it?
Sure.
Yes.
All right, sections four through six, add the periods to all the ends, that's minor. 7A, there's concerns about the way the methods of the vacancies were filled, and that there was, in the past, that the whole Road Committee quit and the board was able to appoint for the full term. As much as I agree with the statement being said there, I think that is somewhat of a major, that's a change, a good change, I mean, it's something that the board could look at for next year. Currently, it says, "A member of the public shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve the remainder of the original term." It's your call if you think that's substantial or not.
I'd say we look at that one for next year.
Hopefully, you just don't have that many resignations.
Yeah.
And as true as that may be, this way tends to be cleaner, it's not...
Right, and if it, if, if it does happen, and we do have resignations, you know, the way that happened before, we'll just be extremely careful how we fill them. So, you know, for this one year.
I think it's pretty rare that that happens, so...
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's been a while, but there was a period when they all resigned at once, I mean, he's got, he's got a point that that did happen.
Right. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll keep that on the radar for next year.
And that's all of the changes that I have that were, that you brought up.
Yep.
I think that's in the Road Commissioner one. So that's the Road Committee one, so I'm just making those a couple of changes, maybe with Mr. Pointe's blessing, I'll send him a fresh copy. All right. Road Commissioner?
Did you send that over?
He gave us two Road Committee ones.
I did. Nobody has a Road Commissioner?
Committee, Road Committee.
Might be some leftover from last night.
Okay.
Over here.
Yeah, but both of these you got...
No, you got the same ones.
Can you have one?
Uh, no.
I need one too.
I want it to all be the same, so I made this, all three copies of the Road Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 1, Section 3, it's, it's, I just chuckled because this word has been changed, I think, five times now, so, "An emergency is defined as any incident or occurrence which could immediately endanger life or property." Imminently, take the word out altogether, I spoke to the attorney, I mean, he's happy with the word he put in there, but doesn't think it makes a difference either way, what adjective you choose to, but that was his choice.
Immediately, what was the other word?
Imminently.
Immediately is happening right now, imminently is...
An emergency.
It could, it could happen.
But we have "could" in front of "immediately."
Well, and he said, I mean, he said you could take it out altogether, and it could just be "which could endanger life or property." Doesn't matter when it endangers it, I mean, immediately, imminently, tomorrow?
Oh, I see, yeah, you could take the word out completely.
Yeah.
Why don't we?
But immediately was his, because you want it to be, you know, an emergency.
Right.
You don't want it to be, you know, something six months from now.
Well, we asked him for his opinion.
Yeah, I think we should take "immediate" out.
Yep, just leave the word out, just leave it at "which, which could endanger life and/or property."
Okay.
Yep, yep, he said he's okay with it any, either way, that's fine.
Okay, Article 2, I, no later than, that's just a grammar?
Yep.
"The use of town vehicles or equipment on stationary private roads is prohibited except with the approval of the majority of the Selectmen..." "...or Fire Chief or Officer on duty," I mean, that's, that's, you're just adding someone else that has the authority, and probably in those kind of emergencies, it's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
So we'll add that one?
Yep.
And, I'll look the last for some, kind of equipment, okay. "The use of town equipment for private purposes is prohibited." "Town-owned equipment shall be used before private equipment."
I feel like that needs its own letter, because it doesn't seem like it's associated with the other two sentences before it.
So the use of town vehicles or equipment on stationary private roads is prohibited except with the approval of the majority of the Selectmen or Fire Chief. The use of town equipment for private purposes is prohibited, and then you want to make, so keeping this sentence, the concern from the public hearing wasn't to remove it?
I think we'd like to add at the, instead of, I think we'd like to add at the discretionary of the Select Board, majority of the Select Board.
Yeah.
Town-owned equipment shall be used before use of private equipment at the discretion of a major, of the majority of the Select Board?
I mean, you know, we've got to remember, are we changing, I guess I'm just thinking about the one before that you guys wouldn't change. What was the thoughts on the public hearing, what was said?
Well, was, they were concerned about the town sander being on a private, the town sander being on a privately-owned truck.
Right.
And if there was an accident, and...
And didn't we, wasn't the conversation, that you were going, that those Sanders really weren't, weren't any good, and that you were going to be getting rid of them anyways? I mean, that's why I...
Discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've heard both sides, there's, some people say they're in great shape and ready to go, and other people say that they're not so much ready to go, so it's, I think I'd just like to have the option to be able to...
Isn't it...
And the other thing is, I mean, a lot of the trucks coming through today, and I know District 2, the two trucks he bought, one is, all it has on it is a sander, the other truck has an all-season body, which has a sander built in, and I think District 1, Dave, you have two trucks that have Sanders already in them. So how do you tell someone that has a truck that has the, that's built for that, to, oh, here, by the way, slide ass sander in it?
Right, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out, going down the road, I mean, I just hate to put the, you know, giving the board the option, and thinking of how, you know, board members change here and there, how are we going to, you know, so if he's got one that's already built into his truck, and somebody on the other side doesn't, we're going to insist that he uses, that they use that?
Well, they're going to need one if they don't have one.
Right, or they have a slide in one, that, because the other Road Commissioners have slide-in ones, correct?
He's got one that's built in, Joe's got one that's built in, and one that doesn't have a dump body, all it has is a sander on it. So do you tell him to take his sander out, off of it, and put what was on? I mean...
And then, it's his truck, if there's an accident, who...
That's, that's the gray...
I know, that was brought up.
That's the gray area, you get into an accident.
It has happened years ago, where one of the O'Brien Sanders had gotten run into in an accident, and the Road Commissioners, it was on his truck, his insurance company had to pay it, so...
Because he was driving.
Yes, so, as it was been brought up, is that, well, we've got town property on private vehicles.
Right.
So it's a very gray area, and then, if the sand was ruined, ten, twelve thousand dollars, replace that sander, brand-new? Yeah, so, let's say MMA says, well, you need to replace that sander, because we, our stuff is insured for replacement value cost, I would believe, through the balloon policy, so it's a very gray area.
So, it probably sounds like, I mean, if we're not prepared to be in the business of owning equipment, you know, from the insurance company all the way down?
I was just going to say, maybe we should take it out for now.
Either, I mean, or leave it in there, and maybe that would just give you some momentum, not momentum, but that would, I mean, just get rid of the equipment, if that's what, you know, if that's not a business you want to be in, and you don't want to force them to use it, then...
The flip, the flip side of that one is, if...
The fire department can't use it for their parking lot or anything?
No. They're not, they're not standalone units, they have to, they have to have hydraulics powering them.
Has to have a power unit.
Yeah, off the truck.
In theory, in, in history, the reason why we ended up with them is, fifty years ago, the Road Commissioners didn't have money enough to purchase things like that, so if we went back into the archives, we'll see how it was voted on, that we'd stop buying these Sanders, and it's just always followed through, in good intentions, but in this day and age, with the liability of it, you're asking for, for a guy to, really to stick his neck out, if something were to happen, you know, if it's, if it's on your own truck and you own it, you wreck it, you fix it, you put it over in the car, and we'll get to it when we get a chance.
Right.
It's catch-22. I, I think we really need to look at, legal-wise, with, with your legal team and see if you're planning on changing something.
Why don't you just take it out and figure out how you're going to handle it for the next winter?
Right, and if we ever bought any town's, you know, equipment down the road, we can put it back in.
So why do they get, why do they stop getting used?
Well, in this case, the two Road Commissioners...
Got done.
That had them, got done.
Yeah, most of our trucks come and see them.
I mean, that's the simplest, yeah, I mean, like, when I, I, we had the, we had one on District 2, Scott's got one that's, I think, still, Scott's still got it, but I picked, we, we purchased these Sanders back in, the first one, I think, was ninety-seven, second one was ninety-eight, I picked up the one for District 2 in ninety-eight, and the reason why we did that was, back in the day, we were running the Bryant Sanders, and for what the rates were, we used to get like thirty dollars an hour for our trucks, I mean, it was cheap money, it wasn't affordable for the Road Commissioners at the time to go out and purchase these Sanders for an extra four, I think probably three or four dollars an hour to the truck, so they purchased one for each side of the town, and...
Do you remember how much they were, roughly?
Oh, sheesh, we're talking ninety-eight.
I know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think there was seven thousand apiece then, I think it was seven thousand, and so, but, the big thing was, it was, you know, one truck was set right up with fenders and all that, this and that, but I used the, this, the town sander on my side of town for, I think every year I did, and the only reason I used it was a simple reason, what, it wasn't economically smart for me to go out and buy a sander for ten thousand dollars, when I was only getting five dollars an hour for it.
Yeah.
So I would throw that in the, in the truck, but the problem was, was, like I interated last night, was, if that sander's on my truck, and I say I want to go push back my camp roads or something, but it's on that truck, and something happens on it, it just, it's not good.
Yeah.
So, but, and to make sure that everybody, those Sanders right now could go in a truck and be used, they are usable.
Yep.
I put grates on the one I had, and it may have to have a couple hoses changed, because they always do, but, but the other issue you have, that I think you're, you're forgetting about this, and it was brought up last night, was, okay, you have the Sanders, you know, I did purchase some power brooms for the Town of Acton, which, which saved us a bunch of money, but we have this frontrunner, that's supposed to be, you know, our next savior for doing our roads, but the problem is with leaving that, in that article, what it's going to do, it's going to give, say, a bad board teeth, okay, and telling them, okay, we have a frontrunner, instead of grading a road like it should be with a grader, okay, then what you're going to be doing is, you're going to be dictating to the Road Commissioner how to do his job, because you have a, a piece of crap, that, and it was, I never used it once, because the tires were all junk, all the hoses, the rams, the tines were all worn out, they're all like this long now, we didn't use it, because that was something you maintain with, you don't grade with.
Okay.
Okay, so by leaving this in here, all this does is give, give an opening for somebody to complain about something, you're just sticking your neck out. At this point in time, by deleting that off that article, okay, it gives the Road Commissioner his authority to go do his job, not have to worry about whether or not he's doing the right thing and using the right piece of equipment.
Okay, okay, sounds good, thanks. I would say we'd take that line out.
So take the line out, and after the lecture, you've got a new Road Commissioner, new Selectmen, you'll have a new board, one way or the other, and let them decide what they want to do with the equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, take that line right out, then. Yep. Okay.
S. S, S, add A to, okay. So, I had a conversation with Burke and Clyde today regarding S, which is the...
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand dollar article, and I brought you a copy of the statute. He says that we're kind of misinterpreting what it's saying.
Okay.
So, the statute that's cited here says that "Any department of this state or its political subdivisions of a county, city, tax, or township may engage in construction of any public work involving professional engineering without procuring the services of a licensed professional engineer, as long as the contemplated expenditure for the completed project does not exceed a hundred thousand dollars, and the work both as performed and as completed does not create or undue risk to the public." He says that they may engage, he thinks that you need to just leave it alone the way it is, it doesn't, I mean, A, he asked me how many, how many paving products you've had in the last five years over a hundred thousand dollars, and B, he says that by, by adding something, you are trumping what the statute says, and he doesn't think that you can do that.
Okay.
And he thinks, and this is just his opinion, that if it got into projects that were three, four, five hundred thousand, that possibly an engineer would be a good idea.
You'd want one anyway, yeah.
But I don't know, I can't say off the top of my head how many paving projects you have over a hundred thousand, are there many in the last ten years?
I don't think there's been, been a couple probably.
How many times, how many times do you do a paving project over a hundred thousand, roughly?
At one field swoop on one road.
Well, altogether, see, the problem is, if you take, say, we take the Hopper Road Project, which was around, I believe, a hundred forty thousand, okay, but that was including the earthwork and the hot top included.
Right, and that's a completed project.
So that's why, that's why I said, without adding on there, exempting the hot top out of that, because, you know, like I said last night, on average, the shim and overlay a mile of road is a hundred thousand dollars, so if you go and do a mile and a quarter or whatever, or a mile and a half of road, and you just go and shim and overlay it, and there isn't even a, any excavation going on, it's just a typical shim and overlay, by having it worded like it is, what you're doing is you're setting yourself up so that somebody can look at it and say, well, you shouldn't have done that project, you didn't get an engineer in here.
Right, but what, and, and all Brad is saying is that, based on the statute, he, they can't add words to it, but it says they may engage in, so it doesn't mean they have to get the engineer?
Engage in it before the hundred thousand.
Right.
It may not.
So if you go over the hundred thousand, then what happens?
He says it's always been law, it's always been state law, do you know what I mean? So in the past, if we didn't follow it, we just, we didn't follow what the state law was, but he said that they could either take it out altogether, and, you know, I don't want to say, and, but it's there, I mean, they can't, they can't amend this statute, I mean, that's the way it's worded.
Okay.
I asked him specifically, and...
Because all that's going to do, at the end of the day, is create confusion on whether or not you have to have an engineer on a paving project at that point.
Well, that's what I was asking, so the entire, most of your entire projects go over a hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, oh, that, most of them, I mean, we had some projects that were, you know, sixty, seventy thousand, where we were just redoing a small section of road, but, you know, I guess, the right person could go and look at it and start adding up all the numbers, and go, oh, jeez, we're over a hundred thousand now, you know, and I just feel that by having that number like that, that's just going to make it very difficult for any Road Commissioner in town to do their, do their work, because what's going to end up happening is, it's just going to, because no town does that.
And, and, I'm going to be honest with you, that's what he said, that's what he's saying, I mean, he's, you know, he's not encouraging the town not to follow or to follow state law, but he's saying that the, the board doesn't have the authority to trump that, because that's how it's written.
Unfortunately, the way that the atmosphere in the Town of Acton's been for the last few years, people nitpick and look for a reason to complain about something, and we make, we, we don't want to go there, and we don't want to be set up for failure.
So now, if we take that out, we still have to follow state law, though?
Well, if you take it out, the state law is still there, it's not, it's not the paper in front of them, it doesn't matter, because...
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference one way or the other.
There's another one down there that says, "The Road Commissioner shall have all, any There's another one down there that says the road commissioner shall have all, any and all other duties under main state revised statutes, so it will be covered in that one, so.
Okay. So I mean, you do what you do.
Yeah, either, yeah, leave it in and know about it or take it out. Yeah. I'd say just leave it alone.
I believe it. I mean, it's a law.
Yeah. I'd say just leave it alone. So, okay.
T can come out. We're not an urban compact municipality.
We're not, okay.
Meant to take that out, so that should come out, that can come out. I think that's all the, that was all the changes.
You caught the ER and Rens.
Say that again. Oh, in N. Yes. Yep, sorry. Did I not listen to that one? So as I understand it, those are the, we've made the minor changes that are not substantial in the sense they need another public hearing. So I'll send it around for final proof. One will be listed as question one, one will be listed as question two, and they'll be in the order based on the order that you signed ninety days ago instructing us to have an election. And we'll start issuing absentee ballots.
Okay. Paving bid.
So I did reach, so how we left it last week is that there was some conversation about possibly reaching out to the current road commissioners and reaching out to the potential candidates to kind of see which way they thought might be better as far as roads or projects. I think the consensus after all of it is just to leave it the way that it was. You know, not knowing who's gonna get elected, not knowing what Mother Nature has in store for us, not knowing all of those minor things. They're more than anything, they just want to get the bid out there so they can start getting some work done. So Mr. Langley had given me a pretty well detailed list of, you know, specifics on the handwork and the reclaiming, you know, per square foot. He had some specifics on there. Mr. Letourneau didn't have a whole lot of time. He didn't, he wasn't able to look at it and really agree with all of those, so I think we finally are to the conclusion that we just leave it the way it originally was. Really, the only question that I have for the board is the proposed prices must be valid through. So we're in May of nineteen. Elise mentioned December of twenty. There was some talk about ending it in, at the end of a fiscal year, but that kind of, you know, you're right in the middle of work in the middle of summer, so having to stop and go out to bid might be a problem. I think that's why we originally did December the year before last. So looking for instruction from the board.
I think if you put in there to two thousand, December of two thousand twenty, you're gonna get a high bid. You're gonna get a very high price because they're gonna try to cover themselves for another year.
I can go through nineteen. I mean, it's just, by the time we get around to it, we're turning around and we're, you know...
You have to do it again.
I mean, this is, you know, so the price will be good for essentially six months.
Right, right.
Dave Langley, District One, made some phone calls today knowing this was gonna come up. And some companies are only bidding out for thirty days. The cost of hot top right now, liquid asphalt right now is five hundred fifty dollars a liquid ton on the stock market. Comes out every Monday morning. Right, there's a town north of us that their price came in at seventy-eight dollars a ton. Last year, we paid sixty-eight, thirty-eight a ton. We paid a premium price for that. Again, at town meeting, there's been a lot of talk over the paving money that's left in District Two, whatever. We don't, my, these are my thoughts. You don't know what's gonna happen at town meeting. They could pull that money and not say, you know, you didn't use this, we're not gonna give you any more money. I don't see how we could ask for a price on paving for the next five months when you don't even know what's gonna be in your checkbook, you know, after town meeting.
Well, it doesn't mean we have to, I mean, we may not be able to use it, but the problem is, I mean, you should be able to see this from just the last few months. I mean, it's taking, you know, three months to get this moved forward. I mean, the town didn't want a public works director, so it's, you know, me tracking down the guy, you know what I mean? It's been, you know what I mean?
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying, there's a lot of variables.
But under normal years, it would have been out for...
And right now, these guys, they're backs against the wall, and they're out weeks and up to a couple months paving.
So just through nineteen, December of nineteen?
Yeah, if you say that it's thirty days, I guess.
Well, then they won't bid on it. Then, you know, some companies are gonna bid on it, but we can't, you know, we can't go thirty days. Or municipalities, they're used to us going a little longer. I assure you, these companies will bid on it.
The thing is, if you ask for that, you're gonna end up with a premium price, and we're not gonna get the tonnage and the footage we need done with a maintenance budget. That's the other thing, as a business entity, you gotta look, how far can we stretch this money out to do it?
Or we don't go out to bid and we just do it by the road.
And I reached out to a gentleman that was here that put that paving program on, Jerry Douglas, and he has nothing to do with these other companies, and that's one thing that his company does. He will come out and look at it, measure the roads up, and the more, if we tell them we need, you know, a thousand ton or three-quarter inch binder, they're gonna give us a better price than saying, well, we only need three hundred ton. It's all about volume and everything. So that's just food for thought. I'd look at it before we...
Probably, I mean, a good plan if you, if somebody spends some time in January, February, March and puts this together. But at this point, we're under the gun. You know, we've got to get something out there.
But you also get a lot of money out there too. So, I mean, if, if, if hopefully it all goes through and the budget numbers come in like we think, District Two is gonna be probably around two hundred and thirty-some odd thousand dollars. And, you know, there's a lot of money there to be spent and a lot of road to be covered too, so.
So is it better to go out to bid now and get a price, or are we better off doing it by the road?
You're gonna freeze your spending here sometimes too, so, right? When are we gonna...
Not necessarily. We're gonna get through the paving first.
I mean, that's up to you guys' side. So, I mean, it's a lot of thinking to do, so.
With short time.
We don't freeze the money on the paving because that was...
No, we wouldn't freeze that part of it anyway, so.
And not to, I mean, not to interject, but we, I mean, you guys have a policy on these agendas, so. You know, I mean, originally we decided that people couldn't come up during that, you know, but I'm just saying. So you asked me to reach out to all of the guys. I did. And that was the consensus, so.
And like I said, that's just my thought. It's just a lot of money out there, and we've got a lot of footage to cover, so.
Okay. Well, I just, just to make a suggestion here at this point in time, because you're so far into the season, okay? I always had Dayton, Afar, Pike, all these guys, they'd come out and they would actually give me the prices for each one of these roads. They will give you a bid for those, and if you can give them a timeframe, okay, they'll lock you in. Because if you just come in with a regular price and say, I want, you know, normally what they'll do is they'll ask you how much you get to spend. That's usually where your prices start fluctuating, okay? If you have a million dollars to spend, your price gets way better than if you only have a hundred thousand dollars to spend. So fortunately, if, say, District Two has two hundred thirty, which is being proposed, and I don't know what they have, so say they have over four hundred fifty thousand, say almost half a million dollars in paving, you know, they should get a pretty good deal, but they will, they will, if they know that you have that kind of money, they will lock you in for a year. They have to anyways.
Yeah. Okay. What do you want to do?
I don't know.
I'm looking at you on this one.
I like the idea of getting a price per road. That's what I like, you know?
Is it too late this year, though?
We may have an expert coming up. I do want to hear from you. He, you...
I'm a plant operator.
Plant operator for Pike. He makes hot top.
So right now, I think Pike's price is around, I want to say, five fifty, five thirty, and there's talks of it going to eight fifty by the end of the year, so I'd say sooner than later. A lot sooner than later.
Okay.
If we can lock in now.
Might be a better thing. Yeah, okay. Just go to bid.
And the other thing, if the election wasn't pending with one side, and that's my, you know what I mean? The election wasn't pending with two different road commissioners. If I had somebody that was uncontested on one side, then I'd be able to say, okay, Johnny wants to do these roads, but if the voters elect one of them, and one of them has, the voters are going to elect one of them, and they have a different idea on the roads, I mean, who am I gonna get the road list from on that side? That's not fair, you know what I mean? I think we plan ahead. The road projects may be a good idea, but... So timeframe, when am I saying that the bids must be good through December of nineteen?
Yeah, end of this year.
Got it.
Yep, yep. Okay. Thanks, Ian. Appreciate that. Okay, road ordinance.
Okay, so first things first, full disclosure, the Smart Shopper ad is incorrect. It's in the Smart Shopper today, and it is completely my fault. I sent the wrong date to the Smart Shopper, and they published exactly what I told them to publish. So the public hearing this Thursday is not, it is for the planning board. The road committee, excuse me, the road ordinance is Wednesday at seven o'clock. Now, I will tell you that because it is on a warrant and not a secret ballot, we are not legally required to have a public hearing. So it is an informational hearing, so the fact that it was advertised incorrectly by myself does not make or break anything because we're not required to have one. It is a public informational hearing. The town floor serves as the public hearing because you can make changes to it. It's not recommended that changes be made, but that is the way that it works. And for those of you that may want to question it later, I saved you the time by reading, getting the statute for you. So there's no requirement that a public hearing be held in advance of a town meeting when the voting will be on the open floor. This is because an open town meeting has the opportunity to discuss the ordinance. Some statutes require a public hearing on specific types of ordinance regardless of the type, like zoning. It does say that even where an advanced public hearing is not required, it is often good practice to get public input, and that's why I insisted the board schedule it. However, the scheduling date was wrong. So this is what I'm proposing. So we are obviously advertising it online. We're putting it out there. I've got it on the fire department sign. The board is going to be here on Thursday as well because we have a Warren and Finance meeting at six. We have a rec meeting at seven thirty. So if anybody shows up at seven for the incorrectly advertised meeting on Thursday, you guys will be here to talk to them. But the public hearing on this is tomorrow at seven o'clock. With that said, if you turn to your warrant, the very end, you were supposed to take some time last week to look over this. The only change that is in there was from the Class B roads, the piece that was put in about the twenty feet traveled portion. I did tell you that one of the attorneys recommended you put the word "new" under maintenance of roads on number four, or I'm sorry, under procedure for the creation of roads. I will tell you that I spoke to the other attorney, and he said absolutely do not add the word "new", and that that should follow all of them. And then the plural word of road commissioner was the other thing that we discussed. You still have plenty of time to have another public hearing published correctly, if you so choose. Town meeting is not until the twenty-second, so we could have one, you know, first of June if you wanted, but I kind of need to know what direction you're heading in with this. We want to wait and see what happens tomorrow night, see how many people show up Thursday and...
Yeah, we'll see what happens tomorrow night.
So please tell your friends, the Smart Shopper is incorrect. Jennifer made a mistake. Tomorrow, seven o'clock.
Okay. Anything else on the road ordinance?
Uh, no.
Nope, okay. Warrant recommendations?
So I'm gonna ask that you table this. We haven't even started new business, and we have an executive session tonight.
Okay, we'll table that.
Try to get through the rest of them next week. I'll try to make the agenda shorter, but you guys have something going on every night this week. That's my confusion.
Okay, East Shore Drive.
Spoke to Mr. Letourneau today, and he indicated to me that he did fill in the holes on East Shore Drive, and that he also put bump signs on both sides, and he feels like it's in a lot better shape.
Flat Ground Road.
He said that over the next couple of days, he would be in the process of gathering information from either prior road commissioners or the, he talked about, well, I mentioned Mr. Langley as well because he was temporarily on that side. He wants to meet with the treasurer to see what exactly has been done and what he has left to spend the money on, and says that it will be fixed before the end of the fiscal year.
New business, transfer station, May twenty-seventh.
Monday, May twenty-seventh is Memorial Day, so the transfer station will be closed based on the personnel policy.
Freedom of information.
We got a freedom of information last week. I did kind of jump the gun and had the employee do all the work, and we made all the copies, but your forms have to be acknowledged and signed off, so I'm gonna read it and hopefully approve it because all the work was done.
Okay. We normally don't read these off to the public, do we?
You always have.
Have we? Okay.
I'll do that. You don't have to.
Let's see, it's requested all invoices and warrant articles. It's on Mindy Spalding, anything that was earned, plus all invoices and warrant articles for District Two, summer road work for two thousand eighteen. The one I just mentioned was seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. Let's see. This was requested by Cindy Hat.
So I sent an email to the treasurer because she had some questions last week that I wasn't able to answer on the spot. So I said, hello, Michelle, the board was questioned at the workshop on Tuesday about why the town of Acton would make payments to Mindy Spalding if not Ian Spalding. If Ian is the one everyone assumed drove the plow truck, could you please prepare a response? So Mindy Spalding is a vendor. She provided us with commercial liability insurance and W nine and billed us accordingly for the truck and driver. The fact that Ian might have actually drove the truck is not my concern. He would be an employee of Mindy Spalding, much like F.R. Carroll, Pat Stevens, Punske Scrap Metal, or many other vendors that we hire that have employees doing the work. We pay the vendor. The vendor met the liability in W nine. They are not our employees. So that was her response. Have any questions or...
Sounds fair to me.
And I did email the individual and told her that everything was ready, so.
Okay. Yep. Okay. We have to sign off on this, right?
Yeah, up at the top there it says.
Yep. Pick up by the board's selectmen, selectman's signature. It's all three put our signatures on this. We actually don't take comments right now. Thank you. Yeah, I realize this. I realize this, but we will, we will have public comment in just a little bit.
When public comment comes up.
Yep. No, I don't see an issue with that whatsoever because, well, we'll get in, okay. Okay, phone system.
So in two thousand and seven, two thousand and seven, we had a new phone system put in the town hall. It cost the town about thirty-five hundred dollars. It lasted all of these years. We are having some serious phone issues right now. We are down to, I think, three phones upstairs that work. The selectmen's office doesn't work, the treasurer's doesn't work, the middle office assistant, which is making it very difficult to do business, and very difficult to have privacy with legal and other calls. So did some research. So Coastal Telephone is who we did the system with back then. So you figure, we're in, what, two thousand and nineteen, so twelve years, thirty-five hundred, about twelve. Their price is forty-seven fifty-two. I did reach out to Atlantic Broadband as well because Shapley just switched over to a new phone system that they have. It's all internet-based and on the cloud and does all kinds of things. I don't know if, just, I mean, I'm just simple. I don't, I'm a little nervous about that. The internet goes out a lot here, and although they have a backup plan. For a thousand dollar increase after twelve years, I would recommend that we stay with them. It's under the five thousand, so you don't have to go out to bid. I did send Michelle an email saying, you know, as you're aware, the phone system is failing. We had it installed in seventeen. Is there anywhere in the budget the board can consider authorizing a transfer for the new phone system, looking at between forty-five and forty-eight? So she replied, yes, there is fifty-three hundred dollars in the workers' comp line and municipal management that will not be spent. So that's in municipal management, it's the same line, so it's approved, so.
I know, we've been having trouble with the system for at least five years. It goes back to Bill Shields and, I mean...
Well, that might have been Bill.
No, I mean, the phones, I remember the phones in the selectmen's office, for instance, were going out constantly.
I mean, we paid thirty-five hundred dollars twelve years ago. Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've gotten our money's worth.
Oh, yeah, you've moved every phone around in the building till you found one that worked.
And he's given us free service all these years? I mean, he's definitely been good to the town, and for that, I mean, it seems like a little amount of money for that many years. But...
Yep. I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am too.
Yep.
There's the authorization from Michelle, but you have to make a motion to actually approve the expenditure because she will move it. And it's within the same lines, municipal management, so it is completely legal.
Okay, this is what you just read?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you're looking for, are you looking for forty-seven fifty-two or...
Forty-seven fifty-two sixty-six.
Sixty-six. Okay. Let's just make it forty, let's just make it forty-eight hundred. Does that sound okay?
Yep, up to forty-eight hundred.
Yeah, up to forty-eight hundred, okay. So this is exactly what you just read about the phone system and whatnot, so, okay. Do I hear a motion to approve forty-eight hundred for a new phone system?
I'll make a motion to approve up to forty-eight hundred dollars for a new phone system.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to approve forty-eight hundred dollars for a new phone system. Any more discussion? Or for vote, all in favor, opposed? Thanks. Expense report and freeze.
So these are updated expense reports that Michelle would like you to go over. See each individual line and where everything's at in this conversation and that we've had in the past. And don't feel like you have to. Don't do it unless you're gonna stick to it. Because your treasurer's... So we're close to the end of the fiscal year. You know, generally, with the exception of, I know that, I will tell you that the fire chief was in this week, and he did talk a little bit about the, what are the SCBA's? And what his plan was if it's approved at town meeting, and how he wants to go about purchasing them so that they'll be the same. We talked about invoices and how that would have to look because one has to be paid out of the current year, one has to be paid out of the future if approved. Other than that, I mean, road paving work, I mean, the idea has always been, and as selectmen change, this thought changes, is that if you didn't need it all along, you know, we didn't want to see people just go spend a thousand dollars worth of office supplies just to have them.
Basically, we do non-essential.
We do non-essential, but, I mean, last year we shemied away from that a bit. So something to think about, you don't have to decide tonight. Maybe once you look at the expense report and see what's left and kind of go through each line, it might give you a better idea of what departments may or may not need.
Okay. We will do that. Acceptance of payment policy.
This is just to clear up, clear up some concerns that treasurer, tax collector may be having with some departments, so they want to work on some policies that make it a little clearer. So, "All employees and volunteers who handle cash payments for goods, services permitting, and donations must apply to the treasurer annually to be bonded by the town's insurance company. In efforts to reduce insurance costs, all cash payments other than rec concession sales shall be directed to the tax collector's office to make said payment and a receipt will be provided to the customer. Any checks received by the department shall be remitted to the treasurer within five business days of receipt and should be payable to the town of Acton." So...
Sounds pretty clear.
What it does is just forces all, any cash payments, whether it be copies or permit downstairs, or whether it be rec registrations at cash, that they have to go through the office so that they're received and entered right away.
Okay.
And that just covers everybody.
And this came from the treasurer or...
Right.
Okay, so she's okay with the five business days on the check?
Yeah, she wrote it.
Okay, okay. So that's the only thing I'd question on it.
Yeah.
Okay, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the acceptance of payments policy.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to adopt the acceptance of payment policy. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed?
So, I had my assistant work on a spreadsheet for the fitness center to try to give you an idea of how we might be able to come up with the appropriations needed to cover the expenses of the gym per the conversations with the Warren and Finance. So this spreadsheet is run on the fact that all, anybody that's exempt, fire, rescue, is going to pay a $10 fee per month. Anybody that is a town employee or a committee member who's currently paying $10 would go up to $20. And the year-round residents that are currently paying 20 go up to 40. So everybody essentially, everybody increases, assuming, and this is where the big assuming comes in, assuming that every single person that's currently enrolled in the gym signed up for the same amount of time that they signed up for this year, which we have no way in this possible world of knowing.
Right.
We would raise about $6,600 based on those fees and that would give you enough to cover the costs which continues to come up at Warren and Finance. So, again, not something you need to decide tonight, but if we're going to increase the fees, you know, it needs to be before July 1.
So, in my recollection, it was $4,600 to run the gym.
Correct.
That's what we budget for.
Right.
So, did you say 6,600?
66, yes, but that, I mean, that's...
I mean, it's a good...
There's a buffer in there.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, some of the, I'm looking at some of these names on here, some are summer residents, I mean, and God love them, some of these people are deceased. I mean, there's, there's just no way of, you know, you're better off to go a little higher than less, but then the other, you know, then the other question is, are you going to take the remainder of that money and allow it to go towards gym equipment? Or, you know, what are you going to do with that money?
I would think you would based on it being the members that have...
Which would mean you'd have to do something with this warrant now, or it's going to roll over at the end of this year. Or we do a trial and basis for one year to see, you know...
And then add it next year.
I'd go with a trial.
Yeah, no more adding.
Yeah, yeah, we're done adding.
So you're okay with making the, any of the currently exempt 10?
Yep.
Volunteers, employees are currently 10, right? So they'd be paying 20. And, the other one is, I'm sorry, going up 30. So essentially, everybody goes up $10, not double, so...
Yeah, so it doesn't go to 40, it goes to 30.
Goes to 30, sorry.
That makes more sense.
And then what about the key? So...
I think it's time to...
We would have to.
Time to change it again, yep.
So they'd be paying those fees plus the $4 key card again?
Yeah. And how, how many years has that been? Three or four? Three?
That the key has been in there? Yeah, a few.
It's been quite a few.
I'll have to check. But in the beginning, we did tell people that if they returned the key, they got the $4 back. You know, if you stop using the gym and you return the key...
If you can return a key, maybe you can waive it, they'll...
But in this case, so we're going to return a key to us.
Right, so we're going to have a double expense.
And they'll get the key back.
Because those do not, do not get keys that are expensive.
Right, but they'll get a new key.
Right.
So...
So we're going to let them return it?
Yeah, they've already paid their $4.
Right.
So they're just exchanging the key.
Can we do a code pad or something?
We've had an alarm over there before.
I didn't...
And it was just, it was too much work for the amount, you know what I mean? Because you have to, the system will only hold, so the alarm costs to have the system and upload everybody's code every time it changed or somebody forgot their code.
All right, then it's not, okay.
Yeah, because they've already paid for a key. So if they returned that key to us, you'd give them back the $4.
But I still got to pay for that. The town still has to pay for a new set of keys.
But now you're going to give them a new key.
They're going to pay for that one?
No.
Yeah, so...
Either way, you're going to be out some, but...
Yeah.
The $4, no, actually it doesn't, I was going to say that when we look at the revenues for the gym, that $4 keys may not be in there because we're not counting that, I think.
Right.
So I'd have to double check, but...
All right.
Again, we'll table it, we'll make the final decision the next week or so, just kind of think about what you want to do.
Meeting policy.
So for anybody that was in our workshop, our staff meeting, we worked on drafting a policy, so this would be a first reading. Kind of read through it and we'll see what it looks like next week.
Go ahead, if you wish to.
All right. Town of Acton, Maine, meeting slash workshop policy. All meetings and/or workshops called by any and all town, board, committee, or department must abide by the following guidelines. One, chairman and department head confirm space availability with the town administrator. Two, the chairman or head notifies the town administrator in writing a minimum of 10 days prior. Three, the town administrator posts notices to town website, cable, hallway, a minimum of seven days prior. Four, town administrator notifies APAT director to schedule filming coverage. Five, APAT director assigns meetings, workshops to cable person. Six, APAT director or their designee uploads video to website, YouTube, within three business days. And then we have an A under this. In the case of any inappropriate content, camera person will notify APAT director who will notify the town administrator. Only the board of selectmen have the authority to instruct edits. In parentheses, this policy does not apply to the weekly staff meetings held between the board of selectmen and the town administrator.
Okay, that's the first reading of that. Thank you. Get that back to Jen. Okay, calcium chloride.
I think we all saw the same email from Leslie Berlin saying that Seventh Street had reached out to her, not Seventh Street, Tattle Street, had reached out to her in regards to calcium chloride being something that could be reimbursed through Article 43. So I told her I would put it on the agenda, just kind of get your thoughts. I'm guessing we might have to do some background on it.
And...
Not till, not till public comment.
Excuse me?
Not till public comment, please.
We're almost there.
In my, in my opinion, it, the, when I reread the statute, it didn't seem to cover treatments of roads, but more repair to prevent runoff, and I don't feel that calcium chloride is a repair that prevents runoff. That's my opinion, we can look a little bit more into it, but I thought we, are they looking, I guess my next question would be, are they looking to be reimbursed in the future or...
I would imagine it's the future. I have to look at the...
Because we just passed one for them.
Right, so they just, they got, just got reimbursed. They had to submit the receipts and the invoice to approve the $3,000, right?
Yeah.
So I would imagine it's the future, but I have to find the email. I didn't, I don't think it specified.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, let's hope that.
Yep.
Okay, executive session?
Do you want to go into public, yeah, we need one.
Okay, yep.
And it has been posted out front for seven days.
Okay, sure.
Do you want to do public comment first so they don't have to wait?
Yes, why don't we do that? Because, yeah, because, yeah, why don't we do that? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment right now.
And then go to...
Go ahead.
What we were wondering is, we understood that calcium chloride was something that could be reimbursed. What we were trying to find out is like, for we, for next year, which I know the budget is from July 1st to January 2nd, we were just wondering if it's possible, we're going to apply for it, but can we just put it down in June this year a little earlier, keep the dust down, but still apply for it next year? We're not looking for any more money, it's just the next year's, we do the reimbursement on the maintenance, can we just put it down a month early?
I think it's on fiscal year.
The work is on a fiscal year as well?
I believe so.
Has to be within the fiscal year, it has to be done. Well, that's what I was, my question was, if it was permissible to, you know, just put it down early and still budget it, we just didn't know.
Right, but I'm not seeing that it would get, first glance, I'm not seeing that it would be covered under the Article 43.
Okay, well, we understood it was, so that's why we're asking the question.
Okay.
So...
That was my first glance at, I mean, I read it as repairs to prevent stormwater runoff into the lakes where...
Well, that's, that's what calcium chloride holds it together, so the dust doesn't go all into the lake. Keeps the dust down.
So, I feel like we should look into it before I say yes.
Yeah, we've got to look into that a little bit further.
Yeah.
How expensive is, is it to treat the road?
I think we're around $1,500 a year.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it and see if it, see how it fits.
Okay, all right. So shall I check back on it at some point in time? Give us a few weeks.
Well, it'll stay on the agenda, making decisions here.
It'll come back up next week, so...
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comments?
I just wanted to thank the board and David Langley for all of his work that he's done up at the rec field for us. It's been a very trying time for the rec with the baseball season, with the condition of our field and parking lot. The school has been wonderful letting us use their fields, but David has gone above and beyond going up there and checking on that and working on it and raking it, and he filled in the trench for us for the electric, which was really kind of him, and I just really appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments?
Is, on the road commissioner ordinance, is it item, the $100,000 thing, is that item S? Because I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yes.
The only comment I wanted to make about that, whether, you know, it's up to you guys whether you want to leave it in or take it out, but if you leave it in, I would say it's important that, again, in the interest of avoiding confusion, that the summary that's in the towns portion of that item accurately reflect what the state is trying to say in, in that referenced document of the state. Because I got the impression tonight that part of the problem is a quote-unquote misunderstanding of what the state law says, so that raises the question of whether we're summarizing it accurately. So if, if we're, you know, we don't want to trump state law, so, but, so if our summary is different in intent from what, what the state law says, then we're, by having that item there and we're inconsistent in those two things, it's going to cause problems.
Yeah, and I think that was what, what he told me, the explanation was the first few words that said, "To the extent required by 32 RSMA 1254." So he's saying that it's only the piece required to that statute, to the extent required by that statute.
Well, bottom line is, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be looking at the state, I mean, excuse me, at the town portion in that little item.
Right.
And coming to a different conclusion about what's required or not required than the state law says.
Right, and that's exactly what he's saying.
Because we would in effect be trumping state law and causing much confusion.
And that's why he told us not to adjust it because we couldn't trump state law.
So, you know, maybe the best idea is to pull that for now until we're sure that it will do something very definitive and non-confusing for whatever good that provides us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will we leave it, am I leaving it?
Do you want to leave it, do you want to pull it?
I'll leave it.
Give us a half a second.
Do we have to decide right now?
No, we're, we're going to know right quick.
Well, you can't, I mean, it's got to be tonight.
Yeah, we got to know tonight.
Licensed professional engineer.
I mean, you can always, you know, come out after the executive session, you're still in new business.
We'll discuss it just a hammer and...
Yeah, I can see what he's saying.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Ian Spalding, I just wanted a little clarifying about the Freedom Act there that was brought up about my wife, Mindy Winchell Spalding, and I with snow plowing and stuff like that for the town. Now, when you guys signed off, are we free and clear, this isn't going to be brought up again, or, I mean, we did everything by the books and...
Yep, I mean, I'm sure you did it by the book, it just...
So, I mean, freedom of information is a law that allows anybody to request any documents, you know, in municipalities, right? So, I mean, the board can't say that, you know, that somebody won't bring up another freedom of information, we have only seven days to comply with them by law, so the board can't say that. I mean, the board, all the board can tell you is that they have reviewed with their treasurer, who is the HR and who has returned, you know, who has reviewed with legal when this first came up, whenever you guys started plowing and this originally came up, and that they don't have any concerns with it. You know, and everything here that is nothing that anybody else, you know.
Okay.
So it's all, they're all public documents, they're all of the invoices that might have been requested, I mean, be no different from any other department, but, I mean, the board can't tell you that it won't come up again because they don't know what anybody will request. But as far as they're concerned, as I understood it, they don't have any concerns.
No.
Like I said, the treasurer looked into it with legal and as an independent contractor, it's not us to track who's driving for that company.
Right, I don't, I don't like, you know, having somebody assume, you know, if I'm driving or, that's why we did it as a subcontractor.
And you don't have, oh, the town explanation, you're not the only company that's done that.
Yeah, there's other, other companies that have...
Do the same thing.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I was, I got aware of this today, that an ex subcontractor of mine, somebody has concerns, and that this person must be doing something illegal because my sister happened to be the one, because we've got to understand here, this is my sister that the issue is with, okay? And the timing is just great, okay? So, besides point, um, so, what I, what I'm worried about here, okay? Because I'm not worried about anything that happened there. Everything they did was legit. They had their insurance in, they got their workman's comp waiver, everything was there. They gave a bill like any other subcontractor would do, any, at any point. You guys okayed them, it went through, just like any, anybody else, okay? Um, this is, I believe, a ploy to just get, well, I, I think it was saying turd stern, okay? Because that's, that's what this is right now. And are we going to get to the point where we're going to start at, we're going to start chasing down every subcontractor and see what's going on? It's kind of a coincidence, if it was anybody else's, any other subcontractor was any of that information pulled? No. Okay, this is just really, really good timing, okay?
And we've already decided that, that, that there's nothing to worry about, so I don't think we need to...
I know that, and I, and I do thank you for that, because, I, I mean, I just wanted to make this aware that when it says Mindy Spalding, that's Mindy Winchell Spalding. There's a reason why this is happening.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And the biggest problem I've got with this situation, this is a road committee member that's doing this.
She did it as a personal, as an individual.
I know that, okay? And that's the problem, when you've got a committee member that all of a sudden takes, takes the cape off and puts the suit back on.
And remember, David, too, there, it also says, "Plus all invoices and warrants for summer and, for summer roadwork." So, there were two pieces to it.
I know, I know that, okay? But, I mean, every year, we have these...
You've got nothing to worry about, you've got nothing to worry about.
Oh, no, no, we don't have nothing to worry about. I'm just, I'm addressing the issue of why this has become an issue, okay? And another issue that I have is this, this, oh, keeps getting thrown out there, that District 2 left all this money, okay? In his budget. I was four, four months into my term. And I had a road scheduled to be paved.
Right.
Okay, that's why there's $132,000 in that account. Just so those who are out there doing whatever they do and saying, "Dave Winchell didn't spend his money," I spent my money.
Yep.
Okay, I just didn't, I had, I believe I had eight more months of my term to spend that money.
You didn't finish your term, so you didn't spend it.
So, I just want to, I just want to, I don't, you don't need to go down this road, okay? This is a road that, you know, if you want to start picking on people, the problem you're going to have is you start picking up, picking on all these subcontractors, okay? That are working for the town of Acton. You're going to find out awful hard time to get contractors here, when you have people coming up here and nitpicking subcontractors. He gave us a very good duty. We didn't pay workman's comp on him, we didn't pay taxes on him. He was getting paid less theoretically than the people who were working for the town of Acton.
Yep.
Okay? And you want to go chasing down someone who gave you it, and, and he did a damn good job. And he was there when he needed it, he took time off from work to do his job, because he had lots of time off. So, he would take time off to go plowing. I don't know where this, this little witch hunt is going, but we're going down a real bad path here, and I know why we're going there.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Dennis Long, um, I would ask the board of selectmen to first, um, make the rules consistent. When you have people that's only allowed to speak at public forum, uh, which me and many others have respected that. And, um, I don't think it should be allowed, uh, in any other forum. You had Ken up here tonight, uh, which was representing Tattle Street, which you guys were talking about, and you didn't allow him to speak. If you have something for a road commissioner, I appreciate that, or, or some other employee of the town, but just the average citizen getting up and just talking when they feel like, I don't think is fair to the rest of the audience.
Okay.
This request for information, I don't know what the implication is. Anybody that works for a public entity, uh, has the right to know, uh, where the money's going, or who's getting it, and, and things like that. I mean, it's in the town report, uh, so it isn't like a private entity where you don't have the right to know that. I mean, if, if I wanted to know, um, how much Jen spent at a, a, a night, they're counting the ballots, all I'd have to do is fill out a piece of paper and ask. I don't think there's any negativity here headed anywhere. I don't, there's nobody's asking this stuff. I know myself personally, the only one I've heard say that District 2 road commissioner that you guys appointed, uh, he has said several times that he was left a heck of a mess on these roads. It isn't, hasn't been Joe Public that's made that statement, uh, it's been the road commissioner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nope.
Now, we're going to say, I'm not going to get in any arguments with the, sit here and have a confrontational argument with somebody who just spoke, but I, I understand what's going on here. But I want to, want to address the selectmen and let them know that when you start talking about the way I took care of my roads, and the reason why my roads were like they were, like they are, they were in bad shape, but I got them. Now, I want everybody to be very clear, the first year I was road commissioner, I had no paving money.
This is true.
Thanks to the person that was just speaking, okay? The second year I was road commissioner, I had to come in with a special project, thanks to the person who just spoke, because they were limiting me, okay?
No, I'm not, I'm going to...
It, it already did.
Well...
And I just...
Like you said...
Both sides have issues, so let's just cut it right now, um, if you would, please.
I do understand where this is going.
Yep.
Okay? The reason why I was concerned about that, I am not concerned anything legally, nothing legally went wrong.
Right.
Okay? It was just the way it's been, it's put out there, going after a single individual. That's all I'm talking about. And certain, people can get up there and say, "Oh, there's nothing ferocious going on here, we're not blind, we're not stupid." Okay, that's all I was coming up here saying, and we don't have to get into how I didn't take care of my roads for the last night.
Let's not go there, okay? Okay, now, we're going to have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Now, I'll second that.
You have to say pursuant to, so...
Pursuant to, is it on here? MRS A 405-6A.
Okay.
All right, now, I'll second that.
Opposed, okay? We will come back out of the session and make any decisions that we need to make, and then end the, end the session tonight, so...
So...
So, we'll need a motion to come out.
So, what do we, make a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to come out of executive session?
647?
647, okay, all in favor, all opposed? Okay, we're out of executive session.
So, before we went in, um, somebody under public comment, I know that, I could see the wheels turning with Miss Miller a little bit. Um, Paul made some good points about, uh, that piece on the road commissioner, um, was it S?
$100,000.
Yeah, and where it's just unclear. I mean, we've got a couple of other items that you're tabling until next year, kind of play with the ordinance for a year and see how that works. Do you want to take it out, or do you want to leave it in, or what are your thoughts?
I wouldn't have a problem taking it out.
I wouldn't either, it's, it's a law, it's there. I don't want to confuse anybody if we try to reword it.
All right, so, that's going to be S, so S comes out. Okay. And then the other thing that I forgot to mention under new business, I tried to put any concerns that we have under public business or under public comment that pertain to the board on as old business, so we can kind of follow up for the viewers at home. Uh, so, last week, Mrs. Hart mentioned, um, some concerns to the annual report, I believe, from the 16, 17 book. We were able to get the information, um, that was passed along to us. And as we believe, on page 31 of the annual town report from 16 and 17, under the municipal accounts payable, uh, it looks like an employee inadvertently copied and pasted three names under M three times. So, it reads, "Mainly Media, Robert Mann, Mark's Printing, Mass Group," and then it repeats, "Mainly Media, Robert Mann, Mark's Printing, Mass Group." And it does that three times. So, it is a typographical error on, um, town employees parts. It does not mean that those three vendors were paid three times. It just means that when we copy and paste all these lovely reports, um, we didn't remove it. So, that's that. And I wanted to also point out that the auditor's report is completely separate from the town departments, and he doesn't prove any of these. So, the fact that somebody accidentally typed something in twice, the auditor would have never caught, because they're not in the books, he's looking at the books.
The error was not on the auditor's report.
The error was not, this is the one that, that was pointed out, that we believe what she was referring to.
Yes.
Yeah, no, this was in a town department submitted to us, nothing to do with the auditor's report.
That an employee accidentally copied and pasted three times.
Copy and paste is your friend until you don't catch it.
Yep.
So, Waldo has been found, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And that takes care of the last agenda item that we had.
Was there something else?
Seems to me there was, but I don't know what it was.
No, we've got a busy next couple of days, public hearing tomorrow at 7:00. Rec on Thursday at, uh, Warren Finance on Thursday at 6:00. Public hearing at 7:00 downstairs for timber harvesting. 7:30 rec meeting upstairs. Took care of that, we talked about that. We're not, there's no follow-up from the executive session we had.
Nope. Nope, and the one for tomorrow night is on the road ordinance.
Yes.
And that's primarily which section that was?
That is the, just the one line that's going into, that's in your warrants.
Yep. Okay.
Just the one line. You've still got to kind of review if you want to put that new word in there, and then the S on the road commissioners that we talked about, but...
Definitely take the S off.
Definitely take, yeah, it seems like, yeah, the S is, right.
Yep.
The other one probably should just sit tight for...
Yep.
Because I think that if you want, there's, there's a lot of people that may, seem to have some concerns with that, but we're going to look at it as a whole a lot earlier.
Right.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion...
We got, we did, we did the announcement somewhat, public hearing tomorrow night. EMA director posting it's going on until the 20th is the closing date on that. So, that's all we had for announcements.